...of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 11th, the strategic plan update session on February 25th, and the special meeting on March 4th, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 11th, the strategic plan update session on February 25th, and the special meeting on March 4th, 2019, as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Okay, we're going to move into some public hearings that we'll have, and Mr. Burghardt, you want to give an overview of the project?
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Ryan Gans. Happy to tell you about the Eisenhower Project. The purpose of this project is to replace equipment that will allow us to better balance the air, the heating and air conditioning there. If you recall, a couple of years ago, you invested new air conditioning there in the Keller side. And now, we want to be able to put equipment in there that will balance that out and take care of issues where one room's too hot, the other's too cold, kind of like zoning in your residences. So this is going to be a terrific improvement there as we build on the second phase of this. And you may recall, a group of students are real sensitive to those temperature changes, so this is going to take a lot of those problems away.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing on the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Anyone wishing to speak on the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
And I move that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated total cost of Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. The bids, review.
Okay, there were three bids received in open and read aloud on February 15th shortly after 2:00. There were no bid irregularities, and the bidding was very competitive. The bids are Eisenhower Mechanical Replacement Project, Advantage Sheet Metal, the base bid was $259,800. Geisler Brothers, base bid was $208,175. Geezy Sheet Metal, the base bid was $230,900. You'll find a letter in your board packet from IAW recommending that Geisler Brothers be awarded that contract, and we look forward to getting started.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Geisler Brothers of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $208,175.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Eisenhower School Mechanical Replacement Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Geisler Brothers of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $208,175. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Okay, now for the Fulton School.
Okay, the purpose of this project is to replace the main body down there, the main building roof and a couple of other small entry areas. There's no history of buildings and grounds, but I can confidently tell you, it's probably over 50 years old and well beyond its design life. So, this is going to be a good project. You know, investment in a new roof provides the students with decades of good indoor air quality because we avoid things like mold and all those problems that come along with leaky roofs.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project and authorize payment of legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Review of bids.
So, three bids were also received on February 15th, open and read aloud. Again, no bidding irregularities, and these bids were very competitive. Geisler Brothers, the base bid was $247,325. Geezy Roofing, the base bid, $258,890. And Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing, the base bid, $254,780. Again, you'll find a letter in your board packet recommending Geisler Brothers be awarded that work, and I just wanted to point out, we're also recommending accepting an additional $2,010 fee to clean and maintain some limestone coping there. And we're also recommending a $4,600 credit to go to a different membrane that the district's used for generations here, and there's no problem with that, so.
Could you restate the Geisler Brothers bid because it looks different, it's a different number than what I've got?
Okay. Then we would recommend a $2,010 add, and then a credit of $4,600 for the membrane roofing, and it should be $244,735.
Got you.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Geisler Brothers of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $244,735, including alternates 1 and 2.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Fulton School Roof Replacement Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Geisler Brothers of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $244,735, including alternates 1 and 2. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to board salutes, and I think we have a few out there. We start with Mr. Sansky.
Big board salute goes out to our Board Secretary, Ms. Joanie, for all the work that she does for us every single day, and we just want to say that we love you.
You're here. Anderson must have something he needs done.
That wasn't part of the plan.
Oh, okay, all right. I have one. Board salute goes to Sidney Rengold, a senior at Dubuque Senior High School, who is a candidate for the 2019 U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program. More than 4,500 students were selected as candidates from nearly 3.6 million students expected to graduate this year, and candidates are chosen on the basis of superior academic and artistic achievements, leadership qualities, strong character, and involvement in community and school activities. The final selections of those scholars is announced in May, so we certainly extend our congratulations to Sidney on being selected as a finalist.
Thank you.
Yeah, Hempstead Juniors Brian Keck and Blake Holman qualified for the National Speech and Debate Championships for Public Forum Debate in Dallas, Texas, June 16 through the 21st against the best in the nation, where they will compete. They qualified at the Eastern Iowa National Qualifier, and this is the first time that a Hempstead team has qualified for Nationals in public forum. Now, Brian's a regular, some of you may recognize him. He was a back-to-back Spelling Bee Champion probably five or six years ago, is that right, Brian? Does that sound about right? Yeah, so we've seen Brian here before. Hempstead Debate Coach Don Stanner tells us that Brian and Blake seized one of only four spots for the entire state of Iowa. The event draws 250 teams in Texas from across the U.S. and Asia. Juniors Samir Faruki and Emma Gillis made it as alternates as well. So, with Brian is here, and I think Blake is here, and Coach Stanner is here, I don't know if anybody else is a part of the team is here too. Could you please just stand up so we can recognize you?
Good luck. I have a couple of board salutes. First, I'd like to give a board salute out to Hempstead wrestler Joe Pins for bringing home the state championship wrestling. And I'd also like to give a board salute out to the Dubuque Senior High School Boys' Basketball Team and their coaching staff for the outstanding showing at the state basketball tournament last week, and their finish as the Class 4A State Runner-Up. The spirit of this team and the energetic Ram fans is evident. They represented Dubuque very well at the big dance. These young men can hold their head high on a job well done this season, knowing that Dubuque Senior High School, the Dubuque Community School District, and the city of Dubuque are proud of them. And I understand that the representation of our fan base was excellent down at Dubuque, and it's a true tribute to our community and to our school, and a special congratulations to their coach, Wendell Leibers.
Well, two of the names Mr. Barton mentioned also are going to be mentioned in this board salute. So, we congratulate the Hempstead High School Math Modeling Team, which includes Zach Lewis, Joe Vies, Samir Faruki, and Blake Holman, who earned a finalist rating in the COMAC High School Math Modeling Contest. It's really kind of extraordinary what they were asked to do. They were given three tasks. One, to create a roller coaster rating system. Two, to design an app that was a concept for that system. And then, three, to establish or create a press release for the app. The team's submission paper was 24 pages long and was written over five days, and this is part of the extraordinariness. 785 teams entered the competition worldwide, and only one U.S. team and seven teams worldwide had a higher rating than our Hempstead team did. That is really amazing. So, our team from Hempstead now has qualified for the next round of international competition in March. We certainly congratulate these outstanding students.
Great, thank you.
And I have a board salute. This goes to the Dubuque Senior High School Speech Team on an excellent showing in the 2019 State Large Group Speech Contest this year. The team had 30 performances, qualified for the state competition, and all 30 entries earned a Division 1 Excellent rating. Of those entries, 22 received all-state nominations for the 2019 All-State Large Group Speech Festival, and at the festival, seniors' ensemble acting and group mind entries received the Critics' Choice Award in their category. And senior received the E. Wayne Cooley Sweepstakes Trophy for the most performing entries invited to the festival. The highest honor, this is the highest honor of the speech competition. We want to congratulate everyone involved, including their coaches, families. It's huge. I think our speech competitions always do well.
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with a board salute? All right. We'll move into visitors and open forum.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. On behalf of my fellow board members, I at this time would invite any members of the audience to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving at a timely fashion and allow others the opportunity to speak. The board's role is to listen to your comments, but a response and/or action will not be forthcoming if the topic is not an agenda item. If you have thoughts to share about items that are included as topics for tonight's meeting, we would invite those comments at this time also. So, anybody who would like to come forth, you may do so at this time.
My name is Kalia Nell.
My name is Andrea Cowan. Good evening. We are here as teachers and community members to share with you our concerns. We believe that the system in which we are functioning is inequitable and unjust, resulting in grim consequences for our students. We are here tonight to practice what we preach and to do what we so often tell our students to do.
So, we teach our students to never give up, but it is hard not to feel defeated when 17 of your students have academic, social, and emotional needs. It is hard not to feel hopeless when 75% of your students are below grade level, and most of the time, you're the only teacher in the classroom. When majority of your students are struggling, how can you possibly expect them to learn from each other? It is hard not to give up when day in and day out, you witness the unmet needs of students who need and deserve quality adult attention and support. The high concentration of need in some of the Dubuque community schools is undeniable and inequitable.
We teach our students to ask questions when they do not understand something, and so we ask you, in what real ways are you addressing the root problems of inequity in our schools? Do you believe that giving more money to Title I schools is the only or best answer? Does giving more money to designated schools make the concentration of need disappear? Does the money for an additional adult in a classroom or the creation of an equity coordinator erase the fact that there is an overwhelming amount of students coming from poverty and trauma in one classroom?
We teach our students, when you see something, say something. We'll see segregated schools, where poor students and students of color are in an educational system that is inequitable and unjust. A system that doesn't allow low-income students and students of poverty to reach their full potential.
We tell our students to use their voices for good, and so we will continue to voice our concerns. We will continue to advocate for our students to make sure their needs are not ignored, dismissed, or worse, made to believe that their needs are not worthy of your attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Point of order, if we're going to have applause, I'm going to move that we recess the meeting for five minutes. That is not how we conduct business here. So, that's just not the way we do it. We've never had that in our school board meetings. That's something that I don't think we need to start.
My name is Paula Wickham. My in-laws live down the road on Chaney. However, I'm from Cedar Rapids, Iowa.
My name is Carla Thompson, and I live in Marion, Iowa, and I work with Paula.
Can you state the company that you're with then, please?
Absolutely. Yes, I'm here with Think, Say, Think, and I kindly ask for your consideration and the opportunity of saving time. I'm kindly asking for some consideration on an upcoming business item. So, my name is Paula Wickham. Formerly, first out of college, we called this home, my husband and I. He's one of the many Dubuque County Wickhams. I was employed by Dubuque Bank and Trust, and my career took me and my family back to the Cedar Rapids market where I've since started a technology company, and for over 15 years fulfilled the space of emergency preparedness for schools, communities, and workplaces. That company now employs almost 50 people on a payroll. We have new technology offerings that are under patents and new technology patents coming, and we're very proud to employ and have the leadership of staff such as Carla Thompson, a 35-plus-year school teacher, and 15-year-plus EMS director and EMT. Carla is going to go ahead and pass out to you an email that had been forwarded for the interest of you who may not have had that email ahead of time. On the KCRG, we did see the app that you're looking at and considering that is up for contract review and approval tonight. Carla chooses to make minutes matter and address school safety every day versus being retired from Clarion Goldfield Dallas School District. So, thank you, Carla. In the benefit of saving time, we respectfully request a one-month deferment of any software contract license approval to allow for proper vetting. Until we saw that newspaper or article in the paper, we were not aware of any request for proposal or request for information. And all we're asking is to allow an Iowa company proper sourcing within Iowa laws that properly be followed, and our local company be provided the opportunity to bid on this important software. We certainly are aware of recommendations to move, but we know our newest technology can't have been vetted fairly because of our patent restrictions on information in the marketplace. We also are requesting that one-month deferment because it can simply offer our company that's vested in the local community of Iowa an opportunity to significantly reduce the budget impact and ensure the new technology implemented is properly vetted. The proposed competitor, being down-selected and pending approval, is very well-known in the industry. They have a great name, they do great things. And while it may not be the wrong choice, I'm simply asking that we look at the proper sourcing consideration. Proper due diligence per Iowa code, and our pricing knowledge, we know, puts us definitely at half the price versus a long, three-year contract that's going to fix that relationship. It's a proper, simple fiduciary decision. In closing, I want to also mention something critical to your school board. School safety is really important, and we need deployments in technology, and Dubuque should be really proud of what the staff is doing. Because I can tell you, having approached many of the Iowa schools, not many are proposing solutions. So, I want to tell you that I'm very, very happy to see that you're making progress, and so I want to compliment that staff on moving forward and doing things promptly because what it's going to take is us...
Point of order, we're way over three minutes.
Thank you for your time. So, I appreciate that. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time?
My name's Mark Murphy. My address is 2145 Yorktown Road, and I am also the manager of the 911 Center. I just want to throw my support towards this option with the panic button. We've been working with the company since 2013. We've already integrated a lot of the software on our end, so when this does come to your facilities, we have it already, and it's working, and we have tested it already. So, just want to throw my support towards it.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to continue to address the board?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order, return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Consent agenda, please.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any members wishing to remove an item?
Yes, I'd like to remove the item, the Rave Mobile Safety.
Okay, we'll remove that item out. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving the rest of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I believe Mr. Seize will come up and give us a little background on the Rave Mobile Safety Devices.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Ryan Gans. As you know, today before you in the consent agenda and now in this agenda item is to approve the contract for three years for the Rave Mobile Panic Button. As we discussed in committee, and as you know from our strategic plan priority initiatives, enhancing our in-building alert system as we look at the layers of safety in the district has been a priority for us this year. In doing that, we have looked at a number of options that have looked at in-building alerting, and as we went through that process and gathered information from other companies and also pricing information from those companies, we came across the Rave Mobile Panic Button and learned from our friends at the County 911 Dispatch Center of the integration of that software, that panic button within the 911 council at the 911 center. It quickly became apparent to us that that was an initiative that we felt that integration was important for us in our criteria for moving forward, and we believe that that integration will serve us well moving forward, and we would recommend this evening your approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, that component of being directly connected to the 911 center was kind of a dealmaker, so to speak.
Correct. And actually, as we looked at, as you recall from the Facility Support Services meeting, we knew moving into that meeting and confirmed again before this meeting that the Rave Mobile Panic Button is the only direct integration into the county's 911 system, and so that really makes them a sole source provider in terms of the arrangement moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rave Mobile Safety Devices.
Contract.
Contract, thank you.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Rave Mobile Safety App. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question. Mr. Seize, did I understand you correctly that this system is the only one that directly integrates into the county's 911 system?
Correct.
Okay. And unaware of a lot of the details of this system.
So Rave Mobile Safety as a corporation also is the backbone software that runs the County 911, Smart 911 System.
Okay.
And so this software directly integrates into the council screen that 911 dispatchers have available to them when they respond for calls, so it's a direct integration right into the council that they're currently using.
And that's city and county?
Yes. The County 911 Center is actually run through the city through an arrangement, but yes, it's the Dubuque County 911 Center.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I would just point out, the implication of the sourcing of this was not maybe following or followed our policies entirely. And I appreciate the Think Safe, sorry, Carla and Paula. Appreciate you being here and showing up. I just encourage you to keep us in mind when that three-marked calendars, and certainly can put you into the mix of this, but obviously, this has been well-vetted, and the due diligence on this, I think, has been done. We can't capture everybody that might be out doing this, and appreciate you picking up in a news article, but this has been under consideration and a strategic initiative for us for a long time, so I'm glad that we're moving forward, but would welcome you to come see us in three years.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that takes us to the Facility Support Services Committee. Mr. Donahue.
All right. First item, action item, is that I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Senior High School Educational Foundation in the amount of $7,699 for digital promotional signage for Senior High School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Senior High School Educational Foundation in the amount of $7,699 for the digital promotional signage for Senior High School. Is there any discussion?
No, very generous donation, and that digital signage, according to Dr. Dan, will sit somewhere outside the counselor's office in some of the new open space that we've created through that renovation.
Taking the place of bulletin boards.
I know. Those of you that are attached to bulletin boards are just-
They were fun. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District approve Hewlett-Packard as a sole-source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals to be reviewed on an annual basis.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District approve Hewlett-Packard as the sole-source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals to be reviewed on an annual basis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And finally, I move that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is that all, Mr. Donahue?
That's all I got.
All right.
That's it.
Educational Programs Policy Committee, Mr. Sansi.
Yes. So at our ed committee meeting, while we typically meet on the first Tuesday of each month, we typically get an update from our teachers and administrators on a variety of things that actually goes on inside of the school building. This could be policy, different curriculums, you name it. Specifically, this Tuesday, we got an update on different math strategies to help all of our students, which was very interesting to see the different type of strategies that are being implemented now to help all of our kids. We also had a variety of our principals from our elementarys who came down, and they shared specifically what are they doing specifically in their building to meet the needs of their students, which allowed us to have a lot of conversation around equity, right? How are we making sure we meet the needs of the low-income kids, the kid in the meadow, and also the kids who are achieving at a high rate? So a variety of dialogue that constantly goes on at our education meeting, and I'm excited, and I know we strongly encourage people who are either out on the stands right now or viewing to attend those meetings so that you can actually see the variety of conversation that happens every single time we meet, so it's a great conversation.
Great. Thank you. New business.
So I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 814489 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 814489 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education allow student number 802780 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective March 12, 2019.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education allow student number 802780 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective March 12, 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any board member or administrative issues?
I'd like to explain a little bit my actions earlier when it came to the applause issue and when it came to the being over the time limit issue. First of all, I called out a point of order, and point of order in parliamentary procedure can either be upheld or not upheld by the chair. And if we were to adjourn the meeting for five minutes, it's got to be a motion, and everybody has to vote for that. So one person can't push around a process. I want to be clear about that. The applause thing goes back to times in public meetings, not so much here, but in other places, where I've personally observed applause being used as an intimidation tactic. And so when somebody approaches the microphone, everybody should listen to them, and everybody should feel comfortable being able to approach a microphone in a public meeting. So when you get into applause, that's the next-door neighbor to cheering and all that kind of stuff, and proper meetings can just fall apart real quick with that. As far as the time limit goes, you know, boy, it's a personal kick of mine. If we want a four-minute time limit, then let's vote in a four-minute time limit, but we have a three-minute time limit. And that particular presenter happened to be a vendor, and so they heard the bell, they continued to talk, and they didn't seem to be slowing down. And there's a point where, so if we want to give somebody more time than that, that's fine. Let's give them four minutes, five minutes, whatever it might be, but if we have a policy at some point, I think we need to enforce those policies. So that's what motivated my actions tonight. There's a point where we do have to make sure we maintain orderliness in a public meeting, and they were very gracious, both groups, so I thought, no problem.
No problem. Thank you. Any other issues? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.